12, 2024 is hereby called order. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Here.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Is there a motion approved to appoint the sergeant of arms for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Smith, Second Officer Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice. Mr. Mohammed, who is giving the pledge today?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor City Council. Today as we celebrate Women's History Month and National Girl Scouts Day, we have Troop 4340 here to lead the pledge. Ladies, everyone can please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our guests can please remain standing for the invocation. As we celebrate the holy month of Ramadan, we are honored to be joined today from the Islamic Center of Aurora, Dr. Warsi, to lead us in the invocation. Doctor?
I was billahi min ashaytan al rajim, bismillah, rahmanir rahim. I seek refuge in Allah from Satan, the accursed, and I greet you all with the Islamic greeting of Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, peace and blessings of Allah be on all of you. We have been asked by a city council and mayor of our city of lights, the city of Aurora, to make dua and the prayer at the occasion of this Ramadan proclamation. It's a great honor for me personally, as well as for our community. We are really thankful for this opportunity being offered to us by the leadership of the city and especially to the mayor of the city, Mayor Richard Irvin, who I think by now I am personal friend of him. Thank you, Mayor Richard, for this opportunity. It's Islamic tradition that we make any kind of dua to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala or the God. Before that, we recognize who God is and we thank and praise to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And I have selected a few passages, not a couple, just a few passages from the Quran, the holy book of Islam, to share with you that talks about who is God. So the first chapter is, bismillah, rahmanir rahim, alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alameen, and I give you the translation that this is Surah Al-Fathia for those who know. All praise and thanks to Allah, the Lord of the worlds, the beneficent, the merciful, the owner of the day of judgment. You alone we worship, and you alone we ask for help. Show us the straight path, the path of those who you have favored, not the path of those who earn your anger, and nor those who go astray. Again, next few pages down the Quran, it says that, Allah la ilaha illa huwal hayyul qayyum, la ta'khuduhu sinatum wa la namum, lahu ma fis samawati wama fil ar. And I will give you the translation. This describes who is God. Allah, the God, is, there is no God besides Him, the alive, the eternal. Neither slumber nor sleep takes over Him. Unto Him belongs whatsoever is in the heavens and whatsoever is in the earth. Who is there to intercede with Him except with His permissions? He knows what is in front of them and what is behind them, and He encompasses nothing. Nobody encompasses any knowledge of Him except when He gives it to him. His throne includes the heavens and the earth, and He is never weary of preserving them. He is the sublime. He is the tremendous. Another portion of the Quran says, huwallahu laddi la ilaha illa hu, alimul ghaybi wa shahada huwar rahmanir rahim. And I give you the translation. He is Allah. There is no one worthy of worship except Him, the knower of the invisible and the visible. He is the beneficent, the merciful. He is Allah. There is no one worthy of worship except Him, the sovereign Lord, the holy one, the peacekeeper of faith, the guardian, the majestic, compeller, the superb. Glorified be Allah from all that they ascribe to Him. He is Allah, the creator, the shaper out of nothing, and the fashioner. His are the most beautiful names. All that is in the heavens and earth glorifies Him, and He is mighty and wise. And Allah says in Quran, qulu wallahu ahad, Allahussamad lam yelid walam yulad walam yekullahu kufu van ahad. Say that He is Allah, the one who is eternally needed by everybody and He needs nobody. He begets not, nor He is begotten, and there are none comparable to Him. And when we make supplications, we make salutations to the prophets. Allahumma salli ala Muhammad wa ala ali Muhammad kama sallaita ala Ibrahim wa ala ali Ibrahim innaka hamidum majid. Allahumma barik ala Muhammad wa ala ali Muhammad kama barakta ala Ibrahim wa ala ali Ibrahim innaka hamidum majid. And I give you the translation. Oh Allah, bestow your favor on Muhammad and his family and followers of Muhammad as you have bestowed your favor on Abraham and his family and followers. You are praiseworthy and most glorious. Oh Allah, bless Muhammad and his family and followers as you have blessed Ibrahim and his family and followers. You are the praiseworthy and glorious. Quran also indicates us, and I read you a passage from the chapter 2, 136. Qulu amanna billahi wama unzila ilena wama unzila ilam Ibrahim wa Ismaila wa Ishaqah wa Yaquba wa Asbat wama utya Musa wa Isa wama utya Nabiyyuna mir Rabbihim la nufarriquu bain ahadim minhum wa nakhnu lahu Muslimun. And Quran says us as Muslims, addressing us as Muslims, and asking us to say that. Say, oh Muslim, we believe in Allah and in what has been revealed to us and what has been revealed to Abraham, Ishmael, Isaac, Yaqub, which is Jacob, and his children, and what has been given to Moses and what has been given to Jesus and what has been given to the prophets and their lord. We make no difference. We make no difference between any of them. All of them are the messengers of God, and we submit ourselves. And by concluding, I found a supplication of Prophet Abraham in our holy book, which says, wa isqala Ibrahim wa rabbijal haaza baladan amina, warzuq ahlahu min aththamarat, man amana minhum billahi wal yomil aakhir, qala waman kafar fa umattiru qaleela thumma thurru ilaa adhabin nar wabiis al masir. Recall the time when Abraham said to his lord, my lord, make this city, city of peace, and provide them, the people of this city, with the fruits and provisions for those who believe. And Allah responded, no, I will, as far as the one who disbelieves, I shall give him, I will let him enjoy a little, then they will be returning to the punishment of fire. How evil is that end? So using that dua, I make this supplication to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala that, oh Allah, make this city the city of peace. Oh Allah, bring harmony and cooperation between the inhabitants of this city, of this state, of this country, and around the world, against all evils hidden or manifest. Oh Allah, help us support the cause of the truth and fairness, and help us fight the injustices and cruelty wherever that may be. Allahumma arin al haqha haqha warzuqna tiba'ah, warin al baatilah baatilah warzuqna jtinaba. Oh Allah, show us the truth as the truth, and help us follow that, and show us falsehood as falsehood, and help us avoid us. Qulu qauli hadha astaghfirullah ala ilfalkum wal asa'iril muslimina wal muslimat wa tubu ilaiinahu wa tababir rahim. Thank you very much for inviting us, and we really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, Mayor's Office of Community Affairs presentation. Mr. Mohammed?
Definitely. Good evening again, everyone. Happy Women's History Month. To give just a review of the last couple of weeks in the City of Aurora, we were right here last week.
Leadership in Aurora. How the city is celebrating those in positions of power. We have a lot of women in leadership here in the City of Aurora. It is a proud Women's History Month for the City of Aurora. The first city council meeting of the month started with a salute to its female leaders. Mayor Richard Irvin recognized all the women, Wanny Garza, Patty Smith, and Shweta Bade, along with other city department and division leaders. Aurora is holding different programs throughout the month, including a fireside chat and a celebration this Friday for International Women's Day.
We held that fireside chat last Wednesday. The guest speaker was Alderwoman Patty Smith, leaving the attendees in tears with a standing ovation by sharing her story and her journey and the advice that she passes on to the next generation of women leaders and leaders in general. So thank you, Alderwoman Smith, for joining the Power Women Group, our employee resource group, for their fireside chat. They'll be doing another one this month as well. We also hosted International Women's Day on Friday. It was a party with a purpose in the DSC, where we came together and the ladies of City Hall received giveaways that they could take home for themselves or their family. They were all given lays to bring in the energy and the spirit of just fun times. Then they got to spin the PTO wheel. You can see some ladies that are happy to win some hours of PTO. It was also National Procurement Month, so we took the opportunity on International Women's Day to honor the all-women-led team of our purchasing division. A great Women's History Month so far and still half the month to go. We also celebrated a number of ribbon cuttings, Aralite, the Cannabis Dispensary, and Muchacho Allegre, both new businesses in Ward 5, with Alderman Franco celebrating them, and we also celebrated the new business in Ward 10.
This morning, the largest Indian jewelry brand opened its largest, rather latest, flagship store in Aurora. Tanisha has over 400 stores in India and just opened its fourth in America on the east side of Aurora. It's located in the Pacifica Square Shopping Center. Yesterday, the store held a ribbon cutting and grand opening celebration.
We saluted with a toast to new beginnings, new happenings, and just a great new business there in Pacifica Square. Speaking of new beginnings and new happenings, tomorrow, a major ribbon cutting happening here in the city.
A former elementary school in Aurora will reopen as affordable apartments. Fox Valley Apartments is a new 47-unit apartment complex built over the site of two former schools. On Wednesdays, city officials will cut the ribbon on one of the sites previously home to Todd Elementary School. The grand opening for the other site will take place later this spring.
So we invite everybody out tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., 100 Oak Avenue, for this historic opening, reopening now of Todd Elementary School with our brand-new apartments. Absolutely fabulous. Also this month, as we announced last week, we hosted the Quarterly Aurora Interfaith Alliance Breakfast, bringing a number of religious leaders together to talk about how we move.
More than 50 faith leaders came together at a breakfast in Aurora. The Interfaith Alliance Leadership Breakfast was initiated by Mayor Richard Irvin. The group came together to network and talk about the top issues that face the city, and included how to help those without homes and preparing for the upcoming census recount.
And tonight, we honor Ramadan.
Leading the Muslim holy month of Ramadan with a special proclamation and prayer at tonight's city council meeting.
We support our Muslim residents in Aurora and around the world during the observance of Ramadan and all throughout the year.
That was video from last year's event. Aurora Mayor Richard Irvin invited an iman from one of the city's two mosques to open the 6:00 p.m. meeting with a special invocation.
And so, as we celebrate the holy month of Ramadan, we greet our Muslim community with the greeting words of peace of Assalamualaikum and Ramadan Mubarak. And we ask Mayor to now join us for the proclamation and the leaders of our local mosque and our Muslim community in general. If you can please join the mayor down front.
It is my honor to read this proclamation surrounded by so many friends. This proclamation is for the holy month of Ramadan 2024. Whereas Ramadan is the holiest month of the Islamic calendar and marks the first revelation of the Quran to the prophet Muhammad, and whereas with the arrival of a new moon, Muslims in Aurora, the greater Fox Valley area, and throughout the globe began Ramadan earlier this month, and whereas Muslims around the world observe the month by fasting each day from sunrise to sunset while praying consistently throughout the day and expanding their acts of charity to the community, and whereas Ramadan is regarded as a time for spiritual reflecting, increased awareness, and giving to the globe poor, sick, and hungry, and a bringing of differences between people, bridging of differences between people over a shared commitment to faith, and whereas one of Aurora's greatest strengths is our diversity, and we are proud to be the home to a thriving and growing Muslim community, served by the Fox Valley Muslim Community Center and the Islamic Center of Aurora on Aurora's west side and the Islamic Center of Naperville, and whereas our local Muslim community is committed to community service and civic participation, and we look forward to the enhancement and expansion of both through the city's equity and inclusion efforts. And now therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do hereby recognize the holy month of Ramadan in the City of Aurora and extend the greeting of Ramadan Mubarak and Ramadan Kani to our Muslim community.
I'll take a group picture. We'll have brief remarks. We are joined, but you can stay there, you can stay there briefly. We are joined by a number of leaders from the Islamic Center of Naperville. If you can raise your hand there. Thank you for being here. The president of the board is here. We're also joined by the head of the Illinois Muslim Chamber of Commerce, Shafiq. Thank you, brother, for all your support in bringing folks together, and representatives of the Islamic Center of Aurora, if you can wave, raise your hand. And we have brief remarks by a board member of the ICA, Asif Mohadine.
Thank you so much. I have a big list of things to say, but I think time will never permit, and I'm a person of not reading the papers, but I would say it through my heart. First of all, on behalf of Islamic Center of Aurora, Masjid Hidayat, I thank Mayor Irvin and the city council and the community members in Aurora, giving this great opportunity for the Muslim community to be united and sharing this good moment of our happiness. With that, I would definitely want to include all our people around the world, those who are suffering with different suffering. We all know what is happening around the world, so we definitely want to remember them as, Mayor have already included my words, this is the month where we care each other, we take care of the poor, we share food with the neighbors, and this is the month of charity. This is the month of, you know, pondering upon our deeds and coming close to God. With that, I do not want to forget our people in Palestine, those who have been suffering, not only Palestine, around the world. So I humbly request we all make prayer and, you know, request to God that God forgive us and let us be united. Thank you so much. And once again, I thank Mayor Irvin for giving this great opportunity. Thank you so much.
Round of applause for our Muslim community. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We may be seated, huh? Well, in fact, I know it's almost time to break the fast, so you may leave. There's a bonus there. I know sunset is in 30 minutes. Today, March 12th, is also National Girl Scouts Day. Yes. Founded on this very day, 1912, 112 years ago, by founder Juliette Gordon Low in Savannah, Georgia. And so tonight, 112 years later, we are here, honored to be joined by Girl Scout Troop 4340. They've been active for more than 20 years, hosted at O'Donnell Elementary School in District 131. The troop has a great diversity of girls who range from kindergarten all the way through high school, senior year. These are amazing young girls and women who, through their experience in scouting, have grown in maturity, citizenship, and responsibility. They have a strong focus on community service, and they've recently partnered with Knots of Love for Bella Rosa and donated about 50 knotted fleece blankets to the Rush Copland NICU. They've also participated in feeding my starving children in Operation Christmas Child, and this year, their earthly Earth Day Park cleanup is coming up on April 20th. A round of applause for the young ladies of Troop 4340. Tonight, we present them with the mayor's Youth Leadership Award, and we have a proclamation as well. The first recipient is Dorothy Pike. Come on down. Next, Macy Nguyen. Next, Samantha Kennedy. Get it Samantha. Next, Andrea Jewett. Next, Olivia Hinton. Next, Rachel Fields. Next, Leah Fields. And Donna Lucia Dosado. We also have some amazing leaders of the group who received the mayor's award of service for their work with the group. Jana Dosado Skene, come on down. Next, Pam Graves. Looked a little surprised there, Pam. We watched her literally grow up from a Girl Scout all the way now to a leader of the troop. Big round of applause for Isabel Pike. And now, as the mayor receives them and we thank you for your service, we have the proclamation for March 12th as National Girl Scout Day.
So it's my honor, as I am surrounded by these proud Girl Scouts who stand with me today, this is a proclamation for National Girl Scouts Day, March 2024. Whereas Girl Scouts were founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low, whose life's mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character, and through her legacy, continue to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country. And whereas Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader in providing the best leadership development experience for girls through activities that enable them to discover their values, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in a multicultural environment. And whereas Girl Scouts is continuing a legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and the world, in its second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making the country and the world a better place. Whereas today, more than 59 million American women are Girl Scout alumni, and 2.6 million girls and adults volunteer, are active members nationally, with thousands served by Girl Scouts of Northern Illinois and the many troops located here in Aurora, Illinois. So now therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, do hereby recognize the 112th anniversary of the Girl Scouts and do hereby proclaim today, Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, as Girl Scout Day, and this week as Girl Scout Week, in the celebration and recognition of girl-led, all-girls space where girls thrive and develop their talents and leaderships. Congratulations.
Coming in for a group picture. Bring the little ones in front. Okay, looking straight ahead. As you know, it's their season of selling Girl Scout cookies, so they will be down in the lobby when you leave. With their Girl Scout cookies, you can't get past them. There. Another round of applause for Troop 4340. Congratulations, ladies. Save me a box of Samoas, will you, please? Appreciate it. In our last presentation this evening, it's focusing on educational excellence in Indian Prairie School District 204. We are joined by the esteemed superintendent of the district, who is also the chairman of the Aurora Education Commission. We're going to ask him to come down and join the mayor. Round of applause for Dr. Adrian Tally. Round of applause for Dr. Adrian Tally. We are here to honor four outstanding educators in Indian Prairie School District 204, who we'll share more about. We're going to ask Dr. Tally to open us up with some words here.
Thank you, Mayor. You want me to be serious now? But I will be, because we're honoring four outstanding educators for Indian Prairie. These four represent the best. Our employees do outstanding job day in and day out, and I'm very happy that the city is honoring these four outstanding educators, two of whom are principals and two of whom are teachers. And they are day in and day out in front of our children, serving them, serving our community, serving Aurora and Naperville. So we're very proud to be here.
Awesome. If there are any aldermen who represent 204 who'd like to join? Would you like to join? Please, come on down. Yes, these are far east side aldermen and all the women. Each recipient tonight receive their awards for their particular designation tonight. But tonight, they'll also receive the mayor's Award of Excellence for their service to our children and families and staff. And they'll also receive the first-ever Crystal Golden Apple Award on behalf of the mayor as well. So a round of applause for all of our educators. Our first recipient was named the 2024 Far West Suburban Teacher of the Year by the Illinois State Board of Education. She's one of 15 finalists for the Illinois Teacher of the Year. She's been in Indian Prairie School District since 2005 and is currently a fifth-grade teacher at Georgetown Elementary. She strives, she strives to inspire students to change their academic self-image. She makes it her mission to create an environment that is so engaging, meaningful, culturally relevant, loving, supportive, and fun that every child can see themselves succeeding. She's made her mark both within the district and throughout the state, helping to author curriculums and serving as the Educational Task Force Chair for the Muslim Civic Coalition. She has a passion for designing curriculum that affirms students' identities. Ladies and gentlemen, the Far West Suburban Teacher of the Year, Dr. Rachel Mahmoud.
It is my honor to read this mayor's Award of Excellence, being honorably presented to Dr. Rachel Mahmoud, for going above and beyond to serve the students and families of Indian Prairie District 204, and for being named 2024 Far West Suburbs Teacher of the Year by Illinois State Board of Education. Another round of applause.
Come on in. Looking at John. Any comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you. I just want to thank the city of Aurora for this amazing opportunity to be here. I actually was an Aurora resident for eight years, and I was drawn to this community because of the 20 years that I spent at District 204. I was drawn to 204 because of their value on diversity and equity, and I knew that living in Aurora would be an amazing experience because of the value they put in the diverse community that it is. And I'm just so honored to be here today and to help celebrate and elevate everything we're doing in 204 at the state level, and also to learn some things when I'm out and about and bring them back to our school district and our community. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Mahmoud. Our next recipient of the mayor's Award of Excellence and the Crystal Golden Apple Award was named the Teacher of the Year by the Illinois PTA. He's a longstanding member of Wabonzi Valley's teaching staff and currently serves as a teacher and the Fine Arts Department Chair. He fills the hallways of Wabonzi Valley with music and theater and art. Simply put, as the chairperson of the Fine Arts Department, he ensures that the education students receive in school is not solely limited to course subjects such as math and English. A few of the popular events and activities that he oversees, which involve students, are the December Prism Concert, Marching Band, and the Fine Arts Festival. Prism involves all performing bands, choirs, and orchestras, and is a spectacle of amazement. Each night, the audience is filled, a detailed coordination of over 60 performance groups, which includes up to 600 students working together as a gift to the community. Ladies and gentlemen, the Illinois PTA Teacher of the Year from Wabonzi Valley High School, Mark Duker.
All right, come on down, Mark. It is my honor to read this mayor's Award of Excellence for Mark Duker, for going above and beyond to serve the students and families of Indian Prairie School District 204, and for being named the Teacher of the Year by the Illinois PTA. Let's give him another round of applause.
Mark, any comments?
I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you to the city council and to Mayor Irvin for recognizing education. I think community is the word that keeps coming up. This award, to me, is more about the community we have at Wabonzi than anything in particular that I do. We have an amazing PTA who represent some families that really, really care about their students, and everyone's experience, not just students, but also the staff. So I think you could have inserted many different Wabonzi staff members' names into this application, but they put mine in, so here I am. So I'm just fortunate to teach in a community, and I mean the Wabonzi community and the Aurora community, that really values education and gives us a chance to do things we love to do with students. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Illinois PTA Teacher of the Year, Mark Duker. Our next recipient is DuPage County Elementary School Principal of the Year. She's currently principal of Young Elementary School. She's been with the school district since 2007. Among her many contributions, she's served as a mentor to teachers, has made students' social-emotional needs a priority, and has developed strong trusting relationships focused on student support and success. She's a student-centered leader who is focused on building strong relationships with all stakeholders to support the needs of every single child. Ladies and gentlemen, the DuPage County Elementary School Principal of the Year,
It is my pleasure to read this mayor's Award of Excellence, honorably presented to Erin Rodriguez, for going above and beyond to serve the students and families of Indian Prairie School District 204, and for being named the DuPage Region Elementary Principal of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause.
You should have some comments here, Erin.
I thought I was going to get out of it. I too will be brief. Like Mark said, you could have inserted any one of my colleagues to win this amazing honor today. I want to thank the city of Aurora as well as the community in District 204. I absolutely love everyone I get to work with daily. The word that I would use is relationships. Relationships is what has brought me here today, relationships with my students, with my staff, and everyone that I get to encounter daily. Thank you very much for this honor.
Our last recipient was named the Illinois Middle School Principal of the Year by the Illinois Principals Association, the highest designation for its category in the entire state of Illinois. He's currently principal of Granger Middle School, and he's been with the school district for 20 years, since 2004. His nomination states that he leads by example. His open-door policy allows his students and staff to come in freely with questions, concerns, celebrations, and support. You can find him helping students find their love of reading through sharing a novel with them during personal reading or reading a picture book to middle schoolers to support SEL needs. This year, he's worked to build a mentoring program with one of the feeder schools, and one day a week, he takes some of the at-risk students over to the feeder school to work with the younger students. The kids eat breakfast together and play games and just connect. And every day at dismissal, because he plays all roles at the school, you can find him directing traffic out in front of the building. Ladies and gentlemen, the Illinois Middle School Principal of the Year, Principal of Granger Middle School, Al Davenport.
It is my honor to read this mayor's Award of Excellence, being honorably presented to Al Davenport, for going above and beyond to serve the students and families of Indian Prairie School District 204, and for being named the Illinois Middle School Principal of the Year by the Illinois Principals Association. Give him a round of applause.
All right, well, I'd just like to echo everything that my colleagues up here have said. It really is about relationships and community, and I think, you know, the city of Aurora, the council, mayor, just such an honor. And again, we have great kids in District 204, great teachers, and this is just a reflection of all the awesome people we work with every day. So thank you.
Good round of applause. As we do a group picture, all of your recipients can come to the front, next to the mayor. Another round of applause for Dr. Rachel Mahmoud, Erin Rodriguez, Mark Duker, and Al Okay, thank you so much.
I will give our award recipients and folks that have came to see the award recipients receive their awards the opportunity to file out before we start the regular business of city council. Again, thank you for all you do for our educational community. All right, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, mayoral appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
24-112, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Ashley Goken to the Innovation and Technology Advisory.
There's a motion made by Alderman Seville, second by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. I see Ashley Goken here in the room. Let's give her a round of applause. Now, Ms. Goken, I'm going to ask you to come up and take a picture with me in the front, if you don't mind. Before, I'd like to give our city council and the folks in the room a little bit of background on who you are and what you and your family have done for our, for the world. You know, Ashley Goken is a granddaughter of Jack Goken, the founder of MCI Telephone Company and Airphone, a company that provides telephone service on airplanes. She is a daughter of Sandra Goken, who serves as the president of Airphone, who launched 10 global companies. Ashley is a third-generation entrepreneur, technology expert, and voice of the global smart city revolution. Let's give her another round of applause. Changing things here in this world of ours. All right, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you read the rules of public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you call the first person wishing to offer public comment, Madam Clerk?
Adam Pauly.
Mr. Pauly, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now, sir.
Thank you. I rise today in support of House Bill 2. Unfortunately, I was told by a staffer down in Springfield that it was not going to pass, but moving forward, I hope for similar legislation. And I'll just read the legislative findings at the beginning, because it says it better than I could. Illinois is experiencing a growing overdose crisis. According to Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, over 4,000 Illinoisans died from overdoses between January 2021 and January 2022, a 12.6% increase from the previous year. Most of these are preventable deaths involving opioids. A significant reason for the increase in death is a poisoned drug supply with illicit fentanyl killing people using street-bought substances. With the increasing use of potent fentanyl in the illicit supply in Illinois, more lives will continue to be lost. Nearly all witnessed opioid overdoses are reversible with the provision of oxygen, naloxone, and other emergency care. However, many people use drugs alone or use them with people who do not have naloxone and are not trained in overdose response. Overdose prevention sites can save lives. Overdose prevention sites can provide individuals with hygienic, safe spaces to consume pre-obtained drugs and access other harm reduction, treatment, recovery, and ancillary support services. The goals of overdose prevention sites are saving lives by quickly providing emergency care to persons experiencing an overdose, reducing the spread of infectious diseases such as AIDS and hepatitis, reducing public injection of substances and discarded syringes in surrounding areas, linking those with substance use disorders, behavioral and physical health supports. This is a good bill. I know the city of Aurora has a history of pushing for good bills. If we can push for bills for casinos and push for bills for drones, then we can push for a reasonable bill like this, which would create a pilot program, and the rules would be written up by health experts at the Department of Public Health. Our numbers are not getting better. This is kind of an out-of-the-box solution, but in the places that have tried it, it has worked. 30% more people who have utilized services like this have gotten clean, and people are 100% more likely to not die in these places, and that is the goal. I had a chat about prevention today with somebody, but sometimes people fall through the cracks, they become...
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Call the next speaker.
Gillian Gibson.
Gibson, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to, she had to leave, but personally congratulate Dr. Rachel Mahmoud for accomplishments that led to her to be in the running for Illinois Teacher of the Year. Dr. Mahmoud has been an incredible role model, teacher, and friend to my children and I throughout the years, and we're extremely grateful for everything she does. I also would like to invite you all to Georgetown Elementary's Multicultural Night that she has graciously organized for our PTA on Monday at 5:00 p.m. I would like to take this opportunity to speak on the traffic and pedestrian safety along the corridor of Ogden Avenue between the intersections of Long Grove Lane and Montgomery Road. As you may be aware, we, there have been multiple accidents, near misses, and fatalities along this roadway, including recently that of a child. There are currently six schools, a public library, and a community center, and various parks, all within a one-and-a-half mile radius of this area. I feel that now is the time to take a multi-agency approach to evaluate this corridor for the safety of our community. I understand this is a state highway, but I and members of my neighborhood are asking that the city of Aurora, state of Illinois, and Indian Prairie School Districts work together to assess this area and recommend and implement new safety, traffic safety measures to decrease the potential for future tragedies. to decrease the potential for future tragedies. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Next, we will hear the, both the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk now please, please read both agendas in full?
Twenty-four dash twenty-eight, a resolution to award the 2023 Manhole Rehabilitation Project within all 10 wards to Emergia Incorporated in the bid amount of $163,962.00. Twenty-four dash six-four, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development and approving the Christ Pentecostal International Church Plan Description for the property located at 2020 Church Road. Twenty-four dash eight-one, a resolution requesting to approve the purchase of additional licenses of Vetro Fiber Map from Vetro Incorporated in Portland for the amount not to exceed $175,320 for a three-year term. Twenty-four dash one-zero-five, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024, amendment number one for the 2024 fiscal year. Twenty-four dash one-one-one, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a special-purpose recreational institution's use on the property located at 4304 East New York Street. Twenty-four dash one-two-zero, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Fox Valley Entertainment District licenses with self-service, strolling, and package sales endorsements unofficially related to the application from Fox Taps LLC, doing business as Tapil Social Fox Valley at the Fox Valley Mall in Ward 10. Twenty-four dash one-two-two, a resolution to award the McCleary Water Main Loop Project located in Ward Four to Brand Excavating from Morris, Illinois in the bid amount of $86,200.00. Twenty-four dash one-two-three, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a reel grinder from Reinders in the amount not to exceed $59,327.40. Twenty-four dash one-two-eight, an ordinance vacating an easement on the property located, generally located south of New York Street and west of Route 59 in DuPage County, Aurora. Twenty-four dash one-three-six, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city for workers' compensation claim number Twenty-four dash one-three-seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Mark Taghapp as Chief Information Security Officer. Twenty-four dash one-four-one, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 city council meeting.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza before we entertain those motions. Is there a motion to, are there any question, discussions, or any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda or direct to council consent agenda? There being no questions, no motions to remove any items. A motion is second on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade? Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Both consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are approved. Let's go on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under unfinished business?
Twenty-four dash eight-two, a resolution to approve $100,000 for any necessary repairs or replacement of city-owned closed-circuit TV cameras for 2024.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any question or discussions on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Read the next item, clerk.
Twenty-four dash eight-three, a resolution authorizing an amount of up to $100,000 to Cientel Solutions for any necessary repairs or replacement of city-owned computer network infrastructure for 2024.
Been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. That concludes unfinished business. There is no new business for the agenda. There are no reports to present to the council. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills?
Listen.
Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any question, discussions on the bills? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The bills are approved. There is no need for a closed session.
Motion adjourned.
Second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
This meeting is adjourned.